I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, next I uh caller roll call starting on my left.
Counselperson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olvin.
Counselperson Greg Anderson.
Mayor Jimmy John Key.
Counselperson Brent Byer.
Counselperson Josh Aaron.
Approval of tonight's agenda?
Shouldn't be anything additional from staff.
Anything up here?
Move to approve.
You got a motion, do we have a second? We got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Looking for approval of council meeting minutes of August twenty-seventh.
Make motion approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us to finances budget. You have the accounts payable, any of the additional listing in there? Any questions or concerns? We'll direct them to staff please.
The sun communities, that's just the pass through?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, they'll all be taken out specifically because it will be reimbursing.
Actually, I was gonna ask about that too because it's in there at about seventy-five thousand. And their report, that study was only fifty thousand, or right?
No, it wasn't.
The way the agreement reads, they'll have to cover all costs.
So all that money is just for that pro- for that particular?
No, 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 sometimes the way our system works, a few keywords pop in and sometimes there's some added definition or added items in there.
Because I think the breakdown should look like forty-nine fifteen.
So that one had several other projects built in with it.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? You're all satisfied, you look to your motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us to motions and general business. First item on general business tonight is abatement of one oh three, twentieth street northeast, Roger Egholm. On July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, city council held a public hearing regarding the abatement of the above described property. The hearing was to give Roger a chance to let the council know what his plans regarding the violation of ordinance thirteen fifty dot zero five, storage of material on the property outside. Mr. Egholm was in attendance along with Jay Christensen, who was a friend of yours to help him out. As per the request of Christensen, the city council agreed to postpone the abatement until August twenty-seventh so that Egholm could reach out to his attorney, who would help him understand the violation, the council's request to remove the items. Staff has been in contact with Christensen, who indicated that Egholm wanted to auction off the materials outside the building, indicated that he Egholm agreed to lease out the building. On the fifth of September, staff met with Roger at the site. No action to clean up the outside had been made by Roger. He also said that there wasn't a lease in place and was planning to stay in the building. Staff informed him that the matter would be on the council agenda for tonight's meeting and requested that he attend. As he indicated, he was going to start the removal process. Pictures were taken and will be reviewed prior to the meeting. If deemed that significant progress has not been made, staff is recommending following action, which would be for the council to determine the violation of ordinance thirteen five oh point oh five and to order the abatement of the property. Any questions? Did you all get a chance to go out there and look?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you all see a lot of progress?
No.
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To?
Abate.
We have a motion to abate, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Has he had any further discussions with you, like since he said, when you guys recommended that he should come tonight?
He uh um, he said he wasn't sure that he could make it. Um, and we just encouraged him to, to be here.
But he fully understands.
Since we were out there last week, he did cut down some of the weeds, but then he's also put up a sign without a permit after we've told him he needed one.
But he seemed to understand it because this Jay guy was still working for him basically and explaining to him.
We didn't talk to Jay, we, I didn't call Jay again.
Alright, it sounds like he's had plenty of opportunity.
These are more than we planned, I give them so.
Yeah, you've given him a second chance over and above the first chance and then we reiterated with him all the uses he can do and all the things he can do again. It's just this outside cleanup. And so, I don't know how far we can do now.
And he, when we were out there, he did say that he was gonna start, almost even that day, he had the, his son's semi trailer or whatever, and he was gonna start hauling, but we were out there this morning and nothing had changed.
We have a motion and a second to order the abatement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next on the agenda, ordinance hazardous trees. As per council direction, staff has been working on a group of plan in which to remove prop- in which the property owner wouldn't have to come up with some major, major dollars in order to remove what hazardous tree. Out of our attorney's suggestion, in regards to a payment plan, the property owner can sign a petition and waiver agreement, which will allow the city to assess the amount to the property to be paid over a period of years along with the property taxes. It was her recommendation that the city charge an interest rate at one to one and a half percent higher than what an institutional lender would charge. The agreement would also waive the assessment hearing process, which will make this process much easier. Excuse me. If council is agreeable to this process, the next step would be to approve the ordinance amendment. As a recap, the procedure that would be followed is complaint to the city, inspection by Public Works City Forester, the third party, which would be an arborist. If determined to be hazardous, a letter will be sent to the property owner asking that they remove the tree within thirty days. If they fail to comply, the city would hire someone to remove the tree. The property owner will be responsible for the cost of the removal and could enter into an agreement with the city to have the amount assessed. So council action requested would be to approve or deny ordinance two thousand nineteen dash, an ordinance amending chapter six, public nuisance affecting peace and safety, section six, ten point zero four, S. Hazardous Trees. Discussion?
So I have two issues with this change, although I definitely like seeing it like this. Um, I still think thirty days is really hard to do. I think even if somebody were to contact a, a tree company to come and remove the prop- the tree, I don't know that they'd get them within thirty days. So I don't know if they just have, if we put ninety days or if you just have to show that you contacted somebody. And the second thing, I'm not sure about why we would charge higher percentage than what a institutional lender would charge. I mean, I understand that it's nice, nice to make money.
Similar to our assessments that we charge?
That's why, yeah, because this petition they would sign would be very similar to if a neighborhood petitioned you for their street to be done.
What I mean, it's over what it costs us for administrative fees and things like that.
Yeah.
It's not so, it would be like ten percent plus one. It'd be, if we're borrowing money for assessments, two point five, about three years, two and a half.
Yeah, then this would be a three point five or something. So just a point over that covers administrative and then our financial.
So whatever we're borrowing for is that we do assessments.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I was, okay, that clears it up.
And as far as the thirty days, I think staff has said before, they work with people, I mean, as long as they get the process started at least.
I think, I think you want to keep the thirty days in there so that these people do take it serious and that they start contacting um, companies to come in and remove it. Um, you know, if you give them ninety days, then on ninety day number a hundred, because then I'll finally send the second letter, then they'll go, oh, and then it'll just drag on. So I think if you do thirty days, knowing that we will work with them, they just need to show that they've acknowledged it and
Does it need to be worded somehow then? Because what I'm hearing is, as long as they make arrangements within thirty days, then that's good, I mean, I, I just get nervous about, we'll work with you? I mean, what does that mean? Is it gonna be the same for everybody? I would like to think it is, but does it need to be worded like that? You have to have a plan in place by thirty days or, I mean, I, I don't know. Or are we good to say?
None of our other ordinances have that. They always have that, you know, ten days or thirty days or whatever. Um, we can, we're gonna meet with our attorney today and check with her. I think she's gonna want the thirty days, knowing then that they just, all they have to do is call us or do something.
We, so we would.
We would know most of the tree guys that are doing the work anyway. And if they say, I've got so-and-so lined up, they haven't got here, that all we gotta do is, what do you have? Okay, I'll find the whole tree service. Give them a call and if he says, oh, they haven't talked to us, I mean, we can check up on that stuff. You kind of get some off that.
Yeah, if it would get to the point where, let's say they said, you know, we need another sixty days and then that didn't happen, we would probably come back to you guys and say, okay, we need to go ahead and enforce this.
So the way I understand is if, if, if thirty days and they say we contacted line holes, but he can't get there for sixty days, if we have to check, we'll check and if he says, I can't get there for sixty days, at least we know the process is.
Right, right. Yeah, if you give people ninety days or sixty days, they just.
Get some off the bubble, like thirty days.
Yeah, we've done that with some of the sidewalk connections and actually those thirty days have turned into two years plus because they can't find contractors to board.
If they're not gonna do it thirty days, they're not gonna do it ninety days. They'll just wait till the burn end and come up with an excuse.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned, I mean, I understand that. I, I just get nervous saying, okay, this is what our ordinance says, but we're gonna set this ordinance as-is and, but we know we're gonna do something outside of what it says. You know, that just seems strange to me. As long as it's
We, and, and you know, if you, we could change it to sixty days if.
Well, I don't even care. I mean, I would expect that won't work with people either way. I just wanna make sure that everybody gets treated the same, you know, so.
Yeah, I respect that.
I mean, if it's too wet to give in someone's yard because we've had rain, we're not gonna say yes thirty days. It's too wet, they're gonna tear their yard up, we're not gonna force them to do it.
I get that.
Would it be better just to have, provide proof that, that something is lined up within thirty days instead of having the tree removed within thirty days?
Just said plan two, so that they plan to remove the tree.
Yeah, they have to sign a contract with whoever is going to remove the tree anyway, so produce that paperwork within thirty days. And then you guys aren't making phone calls either.
I have five thirty days to get some off the bubble. Because like you said, it just varies on us. Like we used to, before we passed that ordinance about mowing grass, it was send a letter after letter after letter after letter. We feel like we're getting jerked around, we'll just go take the tree down and then I'll get assessed for it.
You should be able to order like an abatement, just like you did in the previous um, action.
Right, any of that would be come back before council meeting, so that I'd be fine with that.
Maybe if staff reported back to you that we're not seeing any action, then we have to recommend to you to approve the abatement and then we go ahead and do it.
Any other discussion? Josh?
No, I like the way it's, I like that would say uh give the people some options on getting, on paying for it.
Right.
No, it looks good to me.
Jeremiah?
I don't have a problem with it.
Anybody make a motion yet?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You know, do you want to do forty-five days? Let's do forty-five days. Because then by the time we actually go and mark the tree, they're well aware that it's happening. It always takes me probably a week or so to get that letter out. Um, so they've, you know, and do another, and then do forty-five days, it, it, you know, shows a good faith with the city, that's, I don't have a problem with that.
Mark up for forty-five.
So your motion, like that?
You make the motion?
I'll, I'll finish making my motion now. I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance, striking the word thirty days and replacing it with forty-five days.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Couldn't wait to do that, I could feel it the whole time. I'm gonna be on record going against it, I can't wait.
Wait for the next one then. General business, ordinance amendment due to the change in Homestead County, in regards to the new tobacco age being twenty-one, we will need to amend our ordinance to reflect the change. Since this is an administrative change, it will be the only reading of the ordinance, section three four, old tobacco dash three four oh point oh five, sales to minors will be amended to read. No person shall sell any tobacco related product, any person under the age of twenty-one. That should also be unlawful for any minor except as part of an authorized compliance check to purchase, attempt to purchase, use or possess any tobacco related product. My only question is, we're under the authority of Homestead County, why are we doing this to clean up our books or what's the deal?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and the only change is the twenty-one.
We don't, we don't enforce, what are we gonna enforce?
Because if they, if they sell to minors, we can pull their, their cigarette license, tobacco license.
Did the county change it to have, or it changed to use or possess tobacco related product? Because I know they changed sales and I know that you can jam up somebody for selling within the county under twenty-one, but what if a, a nineteen-year-old went to another county where it's perfect, where it's legal to purchase it? I didn't know they changed the possession in Homestead.
They, they didn't, but this is what we currently have, have on the books, so we could strike that if you want.
Well, yeah, because we don't.
Are we gonna, I mean, if we don't strike it, are we gonna enforce our ordinance then? No, you know what I'm saying, I, they can drive right to Racine or they can drive to Spring Valley or whatever.
And then they could come inside us, into Stewartville.
And they can stand there and have a cigarette, are we gonna enforce our ordinance or their ordinance?
Yeah, I don't think we can have something that says, that doesn't jive with the county's change of the twenty-one.
And I didn't, I didn't even check into that.
It was just the eighteen to twenty-one.
Yeah, that number, what you asked.
Right, I think maybe we need to look at that and then, but I'm fine with the sales part of it.
Discussion? Brett?
Nope.
Nope.
So do we have to resolve that?
Use or possess, Craig, Craig caught it, I didn't catch it.
Josh?
No, I don't have any questions.
Jeremiah?
Do we, do we have to resolve the use or possess? Before we?
If you want to disable this, then I can come back at the next meeting. It's not like it has to be done tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's disable it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to disable.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, oops, oops, I almost jumped ahead of myself here, sorry about that. Finance director post position. Under general business, finance director approval. City council is conducting interviews for finance director position and the personnel committee has offered the position to Carlos Strain at a pay grade fifteen. Carlos is sitting right there in the audience, I'd like to meet Carlos afterwards. Council action requested to approve the hiring of Carlos Strain as finance director.
So move.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. You're on board, congratulations.
All the work. As we all start dumping. Woo, thank you council, thank you council. Yeah, see this whole book, this is hers now.
That takes us to the mayor's and staff and consultant reports, mayor's report. We'd like to send our symphonies out to the families of the rest of Peters, Dennis Yetter, Judy Walco's and Sharon Schnickeloff. And we'd like to say congratulations out to Dean and Janice Wellick, they are celebrating their sixtieth anniversary. And also congratulations to John and Mary Frances Grillich, who are celebrating their fiftieth anniversary in August today. SHS Booster Club is holding their food and fun night this Saturday, September fourteenth at the Civic Center. Morning Lions Fall Fest is just around the corner on September twenty-first. There's always a very, very exciting event and brings out hundreds of people. Trash and Treasure Days is also set for September twenty-first. I'd also like to mention, the reason the flags have been out for a few days, they gotta put them out early because tomorrow is Patriots Day, tomorrow's remembrance of nine eleven. Keep in thought about all the, the good police officers and firefighters and emergency personnel that were gone that day and all the people in those buildings. We said we'd never forget, let's not forget it, and let's be on their side every day when they're out doing their jobs, that means. And nine eleven is also a very special day for a very lucky lady in Sturphil. Just like she won the lottery forty-three years ago. I'd like to send my congratulations out to my wife Susan for getting me.
How's that going? Ever criticize your wife's decisions?
Yep.
Or choices because you were one of them?
That's right. And that's all I've got, city administrative report.
Our reports, reports in your pocket, but I gotta draw your attention. Two items, um, on the second page near the bottom. Um, staff would obviously encourage you to keep going with your review of all the documents we got in on the um, tree committee's report, um, because at some point in time here when you've kind of reported back, you've gotten through everything, you probably should do a follow-up workshop with yourselves and/or the committee members. Um, so we can see what type of potential policy or ordinance, if that comes to it, uh, that you may like to adopt. Uh, then the second item is, we are starting to get written comments in, uh, coming in on the EAW uh, process. We just want to encourage everyone to send those in writing or drop them off to city hall because when you come to a meeting, we get to identify who you are, we need that for the formal records. So, um, if you email them, that's fine, just identify yourself beyond, um, what do you call it? Like a hashtag or a code internet name, uh, we need name and address. And then these will be compiled, uh, so that they'll all become part of that formal report, uh, that then gets combined with, um, an additional meeting you'll be having and the planning commission will be having as we start looking at additional engineers' responses or comments, uh, begin the public comments and then to incorporate input from all of you. Uh, please know, um, and we've tried to explain it, hopefully that, that EAW that went out had to show a maximum possibility of what could happen out there. But I know, as I've gotten comments from both planning commission members and council members, they are hoping that everyone can work together on, um, a layout, a plat, um, a subdivision that, uh, takes into account comments from all of us, so. That, uh, process is now until October ninth and then we'll be putting all this information together in the reports and the planning commission will start reviewing this process first and then the council follows, so. Just as you know, so it's still a work in progress for quite a while yet.
What is the process for the tree, the mow of our tree? How do we put that together? I don't know, do we talk about it now or?
So, so yeah, so like Bill said, I think you guys need to probably set a special meeting to talk about that.
Well, so we discussed it some tonight, but then, or earlier, we just, well, I guess we really talked it separate times, but do they, the recommendations came in, but they didn't, they stopped sort of writing up a draft ordinance because they weren't comfortable writing law.
Right.
Which I understand. Do we take kind of what they have and throw something together so we have a draft of something or?
Well, I think we, at least give us indication that this is where you're leaning towards. You know, so it won't be nothing to draft the ordinance, that'll just not take time at all. We just need to know, we don't want to draft something and then have it.
I think the agreement was gonna be that we wanted to present that direction and then have Cheryl draft up the ordinance. But because she does that most of the time and the people in the committee aren't familiar with that process, so they'd rather have her draft it up. Craig needs your guys' input to draft it up.
Does that have to be done at a council meeting then, I would assume, or?
Well, it's up to you guys. Do you guys want to discuss it at a council meeting?
Well, we gotta move forward with it at some point because I know that a lot of people care about that and worked hard on it, so we can't just sit on it.
Or do you, I mean, so right now I'm hearing a whole bunch of different things, you know, not right now, but from different council members on what they want, so.
Good, Jimmy John.
We need traction.
Well, there probably should be discussion on this with all of you guys present, so we've got a field to go with.
I agree with that, I just don't know.
I would suggest like what you did with the park board. When we had the amphitheater kind of final tune planning, you had a joint meeting with them or workshop. Maybe have a joint workshop meeting with the committee.
Alright.
Hammer out the general ideas, then we'll formulate those into an ordinance if that's what's decided.
So we just all agree at least that we'll try to set something up sooner than later, right? Yes.
Yeah, I think the goal is to have something by September to kind of go on and if we need to make changes, we can do that. Because I know not a lot of people are really planting trees once it starts getting colder, but once spring starts, then you want to have an idea of what you can do.
Alright.
I'll just, let us know or get back to us, but a couple options are, since you won't really need this, um, budget workshop next Tuesday, that's an option, to meet before the EDA, at least for an hour. Um, maybe or your next council meeting, come in early and then you can meet an hour or two before that council meeting, so.
I'm gonna be gone for the next council meeting again, I know what I was gonna, the first time. I won't be here for the next council meeting. Alright, finance directors report.
Carlup?
Hi, everything's going well?
Yeah, everything's great, it's perfect.
So far, so good.
Four minutes, she's been on the job.
No, no problems or?
No problems, no issues.
You can do like the rest of the committees in the city, no report.
There you go, no report.
Till next meeting, then you'll have a report. Public Works Director Sean?
I gave you some stuff to look at in there, uh, just a quick update on amphitheater, the, the black nerd is stripped off, I put that in there, we are waiting. Uh, they staked it today to, so we can get how much fill we're gonna need through the project there. And now we're gonna be waiting until they start stripping off the street, the street project. So we're gonna be at a standstill until we get to that point and with the rain forecast this week, it might be even with good weather next week before we start doing that. But it is moving forward, uh, getting some stuff done out there. The, the pipe for that ditch, the other project one, uh, showed up today. So when Bucknell can, he'll get it and start placing, the rest of it comes from.
They're pulling the phone down the park all the time, huh? Kids are pulling the phone down the park?
Mm-hmm. It seems like you get one group and once they figure it out, they'll probably keep doing it. Till they get a lot of people.
Just give them a little isolation back a little too. Alright, thanks Sean. City engineers report, Jenna? You got anything for us?
Well, the project, um, this year's project is moving, um, even with some rain, but uh, next steps for phase one, uh, is to tolerate some of the, the rock and then they were wanting to do it by the end of this week, but I don't think that's gonna happen. Uh, with the forecast, so sometime next week, we should see pavement up and forth. And then the rest of it, the storms were, um, water main and sanitary sewer are all in. Um, they will be switching over the water to, um, the new water main off of the temporary. Either it got done today or it'll be done tomorrow, so, um, and they need to get the subdrain in, um, whether dependent, and then they'll be removing the common ex and building roads, so that's where we're at. Some other projects, um, though West Development GDP, I've contacted the county about accesses on the tenth there, or, come road, they, they need to come out and think about it. We're, but, keep pushing on that, um, see, see what we can get worked out. And we do have the geographic survey about a third complete for next year's project, so progress there.
The thirty-five project is scheduled to be built on the twenty-fourth and it'll be closed down on the thirtieth and starting with water, um, project on the thirtieth. Slated timeframe to end the thirtieth October.
Are they supposed to do that in spring?
Well, we had highly suggested they do.
It's a county run project, so.
Yeah.
Any questions for engineer? Thanks Jenna. Mayor Chief Matt?
Okay, August activity reports need to be filed currently, so you'll have it in your next meeting packet. Fire prevention week is October sixth through the twelfth. Uh, so our firefighters breakfast will be Sunday, October sixth and then the open house, uh, will be Wednesday, October ninth. Uh, the three staff members, I can't remember if I told, we had the new staff members on board since I've been here last time. Uh, among the three new staff members, their training's going well, uh, they should be finished up with their probationary. Uh, from the three new staff members, their training's going well, uh, they should be finished up with their probationary period in January. At this point, we don't see any problems with them. Uh, we continue to have three cadets, uh, one is back in college, two of them are high schoolers, uh, they are kind of going through training along with the new staff members. So that's all going well. Just a highlight real quick, uh, EMS runs are continuing to be at a high volume, uh, we had forty-five in August, uh, so that's just too short of our highest month we had, which was January, which is forty-seven, uh, so we're still continuing to see it up sick in EMS calls. Fire calls are staying roughly the same, uh, but you'll see that in the monthly report. Uh, regarding the fleet, uh, the truck, uh, as you guys know, you authorize the department to put a bid in on the truck down in, uh, oh, where did it say, down south. Uh, it sounds like they're gonna put it up for auction either this week or next week. Once the auction opens up, we'll be able to put our normal bid in. So we're still waiting for them, uh, to place it in an auction. They are only gonna place it on their city website, they don't plan on advertising anywhere else. Uh, last night, our staff talked about this, we're making a lot of high rock interest in it, it's a stat. To that in-between years, where it really works well for Stewartville, but not, no, see other Rochester and that. So, uh, we're pretty optimistic that we'll be able to, to get that truck, so we'll see what happens with that, I'll keep you updated. Uh, we're going through annual fleet maintenance right now, so all the apparatus, uh, go for their annual service. Fluids, uh, D O T inspections, kind of run through all the trucks, so we're doing that, uh, currently. We did have a problem with tanker one, uh, tanker one is the newest tanker that we had, uh, we noticed some significant wear on the front tires. Uh, Brian Cody, who's our chief engineer, got it down for alignment and found out it had two inches of toeing on it. So, looks like when it came from the factory, they never reset the, uh, the tire rods properly, so it had two inches of tire, or toeing on it, ate the tires up, so. Had to put new tires on that, uh, it's the only problem we've had with that one so far. Uh, Minnesota Bureau of Firefighter Training Education, I talk about this every year, uh, we did put in for a six thousand dollar reimbursement for our training costs uh, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. Uh, we were notified that our award for nineteen to twenty is only three thousand dollars, so the state cut it in half. Will obviously eat all that up to compensate for some of our training. And then the last thing we got is, uh, with a grant, uh, or actually a donation, we are putting tablets in Rescue Two, Engine One, and Engine Two. Uh, the tablets are similar to my iPad, they'll have mapping, directions, tree plans, uh, they can actually see where all the trucks are uh, just for coordination during incidents, so. Uh, when we're doing tanker operations, incident commander will organize the talk on the radio with tankers to see where they're at. We'll be able to see on the iPad exactly where they're at, how far out they are. We'll also be able to see all the hybrids, thanks to Sean, uh, so all our hybrids are on the tablets, so our guys don't have to guess where the hybrids are anymore. It'll show there. But additionally, we have all Rochester hybrids, Byron hybrids, uh, eBay in the county, we have all the hybrids in the county, so. We're in a rural environment, where a hybrid from Rochester is going down to Stewartville, we'll be able to see that right away, uh, and then we'll utilize that for water supply and stuff, so. Uh, planned on being able to go, it's probably the next month and a half, two months, we're just getting them set up, mounted to the trucks. Uh, once we see if that works appropriately, we do have another donation, uh, that would buy three more, depending on the tanker, so we have the technology of all the trucks. So it'd be useful for our guys, so they have to dig into their pockets, try and find their personal cell phones to figure out what's going on, cause they have the same technology in their phones, but it'd just be easier, so I'd be going down the road with those seatbelt on, try to grab a coin out of my pocket, and there'd be all that, so. That's all I got.
Any questions for chief? Thanks, Matt. That'll take us community question, board reports, chamber of commerce, report tonight, E D A, H R A.
Minutes are in.
Yep. We got a meeting, no, next, no, next week, next week. Finance?
No report tonight, so we'll keep working on the budget, um, through our.
We could have a report, we got a new finance check, we could put that in.
That could be the report.
Library?
That's in there, in there.
Minutes are in there?
I don't know, it's still. Those who don't meet till August, November?
Yeah, there's one set, there's another set, and I've talked to him, and he's gonna get them right after your meeting, so that council can see him.
All right, park board?
No report. No, we weren't able to, uh, have a meeting, cause three of us weren't.
Man, okay, personnel?
There's minutes in there from special meeting.
We have a meeting on the third, minutes, yep, there it is. Plans only?
Um, Cheryl, we have anything coming up or not?
Yeah, in October we do. Busy next couple of months.
All right, public safety. Thank you, again. Public works? Nope, nothing, ready?
Uh, report, her minutes are in your packet, and now they'll start becoming more regular too, as we're back in board with them, so.
Roqah?
Uh, minutes are in your packet, nothing additional report?
You getting talked into getting us a road yet, Bill?
Try, try, try.
Student one eighty? Nothing, everything's cool, all right, transit advisory committee? I'm sure he's got one coming up pretty quick.
Yep, yep.
Communications, you got a C D A update in there, if you want to prove that. Uh, that takes us to the open mic. City council welcomes and encourages participation of the community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must convert into city business, and must adhere to the data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes. Speakers will be recognized only once at this time. I will ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
I don't use.
Anyone else wanna use open mic? There we go.
Jesse Johnston, twenty-one.
Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.